Good morning, everyone, colleagues and audience members. My name is Ed Weisinger. I am the chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We are here this morning to conduct our 18th voting session on amendments to the City Council Bill 12-0152, which is Transform Baltimore Zoning. Electronic files are being made available on the City Council website. The draft amendments can be downloaded from the bill file page by inputting the following link into your web browser, which is https://baltimore-ledistar.com. Also, a copy of the draft amendments also have been placed in the bill folder, which is located in the Executive Secretary's office here on the fourth floor. Her name is Gertana Austin. I encourage everyone to visit the city's council website to stay updated about the bill. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the proposed amendments, page by page. We'll vote on as much as we can during today's session. Also, public testimony will not be allowed during the voting session. City agencies may be questioned about particular amendments being discussed by the committee. We are here, joined by, to my far left is Councilman Nick Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Nick Mosby's right is Councilman Bill Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Across from Councilman Bill Henry is Councilman Warren Branch. To Councilman Branch's left is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
To my second right is Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're also joined by Councilman Kraft, who had to step out for a moment. We're also joined by Councilwoman Ricky Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Council, I mean, also by the mayor's office, Angela Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To my far right is Ms. Kara Kuntz, representing Bernard Jack Young.
Thank you.
And to my immediate right is Ms. Jennifer Coats, who is the staff person to the Transform Baltimore Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If you would like to, if anyone would like to contact the committee, please mail correspondence to the Office of Council Services. Attention to Jennifer Coats, 100 North Holiday Street, and that's Baltimore Mall, 21202. Or you can email Jennifer at jennifer.coats@baltimorecity.gov. My one and only grand rule is, could you please make sure you turn off your cell phones, smartphones, give courtesy and respect to the committee? We also, committee communications, by council members, we received from Councilwoman Clark, this is text amendment, subsection 18-308. Also from Councilwoman Clark, amendment table T 612 for table 11-301. Also from Councilwoman Clark, amendments table 39 and 43 tables. Councilman Henry, amendment table T 611. Councilman Mosby, amendment, map amendment. Councilwoman Spector, on behalf of Ms. Lisa Jones, the amendments table 8301, table 851, not table, I'm sorry, table 8301, then T 851 and T 879. Submitted by organizations, Mr. Ben Hyman from Pictown, Main Street, map amendments. Well, is that it? Before we begin for the committee, is that to make sure everyone is on the same page, is that we're starting on page 18 of the 27 spreadsheet. Thank you. Page 18 on the spreadsheet, which is T 612. And then after that, we're going to leapfrog back to page four for the committee. We're going to leapfrog back to page four, which is T 851 and T 879. So right now, Councilwoman Clark, we are on page 18, T 612, and motor vehicle service and repair.
Yes.
Clark is yes. And I make sure that the committee members, please use the phone, I mean, the telephone, Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. because we're being televised. Mosby?
Yes.
So, Councilwoman Clark. Mosby is yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee.
So we have seven yes. Motion passes. Thank you. That is it.
I'm going back, as arranged last time, to actually the amendments, T 612, recommended
Right, Councilwoman Clark, that's the one and only amendment?
Yes, I would like to make an amendment for the minor motor vehicle. It's not on the sheet, but while we're here, before we depart, 612. by Joe McNeely, then director of Central Baltimore Partnership, to one of his recommendations.
Do we have that? Do we have that?
No, we.
It's on the same page.
It's not on the sheet.
It's on the same. Yes. And that is for, in the IMU, industrial mixed-use, motion that motor vehicle service and repairs It's on the page. Submitted.
T 612.
T 612. I forget what I, what am I?
Is it her old packet?
Move from, in the IMU, move from permitted to blank. be not allowed.
Is that?
All right. Not allowed.
Yeah, Councilwoman, is that IMU and I-1? Okay, so.
Excuse me, one second. Excuse me. Yes.
If you must.
It's right here. Thank you, your amendment. Up top. Yeah, it's up top.
Yeah, I'll take it.
From motor vehicle service and repair.
Yeah. Is that IMU and I-1?
Yes, yes, definitely. I know.
Okay. Councilwoman Clark? So you make a motion.
Yes, I think I have an amendment being recommended.
Do I have a second? Okay, so do I have a motion?
I'm second.
Move. I am you.
Motion by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second? Councilwoman Weisinger votes, moved by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilwoman
Second and a question.
Okay, so my motion is to take motor vehicle service and repair minor from permitted
Weisinger. Weisinger votes yes. Kraft?
Yes.
Kraft is yes. Branch?
to conditional by City Council ordinance.
Yes.
Branch is yes. Okay, we good?
Yeah, second.
All right. So, second by Henry. Weisinger votes yes. Kraft?
Yes.
Kraft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. So we have seven yes. Motion passes. Thank you. That is it. Right, Councilwoman Clark, that's the one and only amendment?
Yes, I would like to make an amendment for the minor motor vehicle. It's not on the sheet, but while we're here, before we depart, 612.
Do we have that? Do we have that?
No, we.
It's on the same page.
It's not on the sheet.
It's on the same. Yes. It's on the page. Submitted. T 612. I forget what I, what am I?
Is it her old packet?
Move from, in the IMU, move from permitted to blank.
Okay, so.
Yes.
If you must.
It's right here. Up top. Yeah, it's up top.
From motor vehicle service and repair.
Is that IMU and I-1?
I know.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, I think I have an amendment being recommended.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second?
Second and a question.
Okay, so my motion is to take motor vehicle service and repair minor from permitted to conditional by City Council ordinance.
Okay, we good?
Yeah, second.
All right. So, second by Henry. Weisinger votes yes. Kraft?
Yes.
Kraft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
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 Yes. Don't get one.
Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have seven yeses. Motion passes.
Oh, coffee.
That concludes your amendment.
That's a joke.
Councilwoman Clark, that concludes your amendment.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Now, we are on, for the committee, we are, go back to page four. This is T 851, and we're also looking at T 879. So let's start on T 851. This came from Adam Baker. Is anyone, one of our claim, responsible, sponsor on this?
I'm sorry, which page, sir?
Language is in the.
Where is it? Four.
In the, in the book, I mean, in your, yeah. This is the country club one.
Yes.
Oh, boy. Okay. Yes.
Country club.
Eight seven nine, what is it?
I got the motion to move the, we're doing the.
Eight five one?
Back to that, I make a motion to move that.
And Middleton moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Huh?
I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Henry, we're on T 851. Mary Pat Clark made a motion. Sharon Green Middleton made a motion.
Do I have a second? We're on eight fifty-one. And what is it?
Okay, second by Councilman Kraft.
Permit.
Can we?
We're on eight five one.
The motion was made, it was second. We're at a voting session, so.
What's the motion?
Councilwoman Middleton, you want to go back on this, so we can, Councilwoman Clark, understand what the motion is. She already made a motion, it's been second.
Make a motion for the country club.
And this is a motion for a permitted use of a country club.
R one A.
Through four.
Okay. And Jim seconded it?
It's right on your sheet.
That's.
Okay. Weisinger votes no. Kraft?
No.
Kraft is no. Branch?
No.
Branch is no. Clark?
It's confused.
I thought this was the one she was supposed to do.
No.
I'm confused, too, but.
I voted no, so I'm going to sit back and watch the show continue. Did he call you? Huh?
Yeah.
He called you.
Councilman Henry, you say no?
Yes.
No?
I said no.
Green Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilwoman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mosby is yes.
I'm so confused. I'm reading it wrong. What? Is permitted?
Okay, so we have.
It's already conditional by board, and she wants to make it permitted.
Okay, so on this vote, we have two yes, and we have five noes. Motion fails.
I just, I think I'm losing my mind.
Yeah. T 879.
Who would know? How could you?
This is you.
Table 8301.
I'd like to move country club change from a country club to a conditional by board, by the zoning board.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Clark.
Oh.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Weisinger votes no. Kraft?
No.
Kraft is no. Branch?
No.
No. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. So we have four yeses. Motion passes.
Oh, coffee.
That concludes your amendment.
That's a joke.
Councilwoman Clark, that concludes your amendment.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Now, we are on, for the committee, we are, go back to page four. This is T 851, and we're also looking at T 879. So let's start on T 851. This came from Adam Baker. Is anyone, one of our claim, responsible, sponsor on this?
I'm sorry, which page, sir?
Language is in the.
Where is it? Four.
In the, in the book, I mean, in your, yeah. This is the country club one. Yes.
Oh, boy. Okay. Yes.
Country club.
Eight seven nine, what is it?
I got the motion to move the, we're doing the.
Eight five one?
Back to that, I make a motion to move that.
And Middleton moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Huh?
I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Henry, we're on T 851. Mary Pat Clark made a motion. Sharon Green Middleton made a motion.
Do I have a second?
Okay, second by Councilman Kraft. Can we?
We're on eight five one.
The motion was made, it was second. We're at a voting session, so.
What's the motion?
Councilwoman Middleton, you want to go back on this, so we can, Councilwoman Clark, understands what the motion is. She already made a motion, it's been second.
Make a motion for the country club.
And this is a motion for a permitted use of a country club.
R one A.
Through four.
Okay. And Jim seconded it?
It's right on your sheet.
That's.
Okay. Weisinger votes no. Kraft?
No.
Kraft is no. Branch?
No.
Branch is no. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Mosby is what?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. So we have four yeses with three noes. Motion is moved.
Technically, I didn't move it. But it took two votes to do it.
I think they messed up. I'm confused.
Okay. All right.
Supposed to fail.
What is? If you take that time and multiply it by the total amount of time we spent on this undercode, does that mean that's how much nothing we've done? That can't be right. That can't be right. That can't be right. I thought the thing, I thought the thing was, was that it was supposed to be, they were going to say yes, and we were going to go no. I told you, we did nothing. And we looked weird doing it.
This is moot.
Yeah, it's moot.
Actually, it's a good, I voted no, because of her vote, hers. Okay, okay. If I voted yes, it would have failed four to three, and then the next one would have passed, and it would have remained, and that would have confused people.
No, don't go. Because.
Why don't we just move on? Yeah. If it's redundant, then it doesn't matter, so we move on. Either we changed it, or we made a consent. Because there was other stuff in eight seven nine besides.
See, that's what they said. We're going to take a three-minute recess for the committee.
You know, it stays like this, I wish I still knew how to play Happy Fact. Sharon?
I thought we worked this out.
I thought we did.
Sure.
Okay, we are, to the committee and listening audience, we're ready to reconvene. Just to share with you what happened, it was an error, misunderstanding, let me say misunderstanding, and we needed some clarity. So when we come back this afternoon, there's a couple amendments that we're going to have to revisit, reconsider. So at this time, we are on.
Page eighteen.
Okay, we are now on page nineteen, seven fifty, T 750. This is the planning department.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we withdraw this amendment, because as you recall, we recommended actually removing the distinction of government offices.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman, Councilman Kraft to withdraw, second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those who favor the withdrawal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and T 750 is withdrawn.
And the next, T 751, is a move to make banquet halls conditional in IMU, and that would be conditional by board. I believe they are permitted now. Oh, so that was superseded. Okay, so then we withdraw that. Okay.
Moved to withdraw. Moved by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Kraft. All those who favor withdrawal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and T 751 is withdrawn, correct?
Correct. And.
T 752?
Seven five two is sort of a part two of a previous amendment, and I'm not sure why it got split into two parts, but the commission voted to have, again, the vocational technical schools permitted in OIC, and then they also recommended separately to permit them in the rest of the industrial zones, except for the heaviest, which are I-2 and the MI, Maritime Industrial. So the amendment is to make vocational technical schools, in addition to permitted in OIC, permitted in the bioscience, the BSC, the IMU, and the I-1.
I make a motion to approve.
Moved by Councilwoman Middleton, second by Councilman Kraft. Weisinger votes yes. Kraft?
Yes.
Kraft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. So we have seven yeses. Motion passes. Without, without ready, T 78. This is Councilwoman Clark. So Councilwoman, Councilwoman Clark, you have, it's really, what, three or four amendments to this?
I do have four. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's, let's start with the first one.
Okay. Move to change composting commercial in, in industrial one from a conditional by zoning board to blank, and in I-2, from conditional by zoning board to conditional by ordinance.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. Question on the motion, Councilman Kraft?
If one of the things that we're trying to do is increase our ability in this area, and we've had many, many hearings on composting, why do we want to reduce the areas in which we can do it?
My rationale is just the overall SBBA interest in, in keeping the, in I-1, in I-1, trying to keep it strictly industrial, which in composting basically is not, and so to, yeah, that, I mean, nobody asked me, I just said.
Councilwoman Clark, I think, I think that, as Kraft was saying, we were kind of encouraging that, but I think there's an error regards to SBBA.
I can't. No, 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 I'm not saying they said it, they just had a generic overriding issue of keep, keep us as industrial as you can, and keep, you know, side issues as limited as possible. They've never said anything about composting.
This is very much an industrial use, and I think as Councilman Kraft, and I know Councilman Middleton are familiar with our Sustainability Commission, and this is kind of a new industry to a certain extent, but it is very much an industrial use, these large-scale, you know, you notice at the definition, it's, it's commercial composting, this isn't the little backyard kind of thing. This is a business.
I'll make it both by, I'd like to change the amendment to make them both conditional by ordinance, and I, it is industrial, but it does have effects.
Okay.
On surroundings.
You made a motion.
And I think, to, again, for the committee, in industrial one, everything has to be indoors by definition, so it's not going to be this.
So let's go back. Councilwoman Clark, you change your motion to?
COCO.
Okay, to where it's by ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. Weisinger votes no. Kraft?
No.
Kraft is no. Branch?
No.
Branch is no. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have seven yeses, and T 847 passes. For the committee, T 88, T 88 was withdrawn. We are now on page, what page is that? Nineteen? What are we on, page? Page twenty? We are now on page twenty, T 89, T 89. This is page nineteen, Councilwoman Clark on table eleven, three oh one, and it seems, Councilwoman, for the committees, for clarity, I see that you, on T 89, you have one, two, there's like three amendments to this?
Well, three is moot.
Huh?
The third one is moot. It's a planned unit development, that's come out of all the use tables.
Okay, so.
And I'll withdraw the recyclable materials, I'm not going to fight this fight forever that I'm losing here.
So you, okay, so.
So I'm going to stick with the parking lot.
Okay, well, let's, okay, so let's go back to the recyclable materials. You're moving to withdraw that.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I need a vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those who favor withdrawal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This is page twenty.
Okay, now, I have a motion here buried in T 89, and it's, it's an important one. Parking as a lot, parking lot, as a principal use in IMU, I'm recommend, I have a motion to go from conditional by zoning board to conditional by ordinance.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Kraft.
And I think to, again, for the committee, in industrial one, everything has to be indoors by definition, so it's not going to be this.
So let's go back. Councilwoman Clark, you changed your motion to?
C O C O.
Okay, to where it's by ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. Rice singer votes no, Craft.
No.
Craft is no, Branch. Branch is no, Clark.
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton? Middleton is no. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. That's three yes with four no. Motion fails. But now, Councilwoman Clark, we are now on?
Halleport.
Halleport.
Okay, Halleport.
Got to page eighteen.
Correct, I'm make, I have a motion for industrial one, leave it blank, industrial two, conditional by ordinance.
Okay, do I have, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. Rice, Rice singer votes no, Craft.
No.
Craft is no, Branch. Branch is no, Clark.
A yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton? Middleton is no. Council Mosby?
No.
Council Mosby is no. We have two yes with five nos. Motion fails. Now we are on Councilwoman Clark, page eighteen still, material recovery facility.
I would like to see that go from permitted in I two to conditional by ordinance.
Okay, that's, so that's I two. You want it from permitted to conditional by ordinance?
Ordinance, yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Motion, move it.
Do I have a second? Fails to have a second. Motion fails. Now we are on the last one, the last one, I think it's recovery.
Yeah.
It's got a line through it. That's passenger terminal.
I'm doing, he's doing it. Passenger terminal.
That's on the bottom of the page to the committee.
It's a, let me tell you what it is. It's, it's a passenger terminal, and it is now being listed as permitted in an industrial mixed use. I would like it to go from permitted to blank. Well, I don't even know why we would have it there. I mean, Lake Montebello is.
So she made a motion. Do we have a second?
Not that close.
The definition, did you want that? It is a means or a facility or location, the principal use of which is handling, receiving, and transferring passenger traffic. It includes aircraft, train, bus, watercraft passengers.
Do I have a, okay. Do I have a second? No second, motion fails.
Remember that this is industrial mixed use, has very dense.
Councilwoman, we already took a vote.
No second.
People living there.
There was no second, so we're going to move on. There was no motion. T, we are now on T.
God bless you.
Is that T eight four seven?
Okay.
T eight four seven is on behalf of, is B G E. Someone go to sponsor it. Okay, Councilwoman Middleton moves. Do we have a second?
I'm sorry, what are we on?
We are on T eight four seven.
Oh, sec, okay.
That's page eighteen, table eleven, three oh one.
A second.
You second?
Yeah.
Okay, move by Councilwoman Middleton, second by Councilwoman Clark. Rice singer votes yes, Craft.
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch. Branch is yes, Clark.
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton? Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have seven yes, and T eight four seven passes. For the committee, T eight eight, T eighty-eight was withdrawn. We are now on page, what page is that, nineteen? What are we on page? Page twenty? We are now on page twenty. T eight nine, T eighty-nine. This is page nineteen. Councilwoman Clark on table eleven, three oh one, and it seems Councilwoman, for the committees, for clarity, I see that you, on T eighty-nine, you have one, two, there's like three amendments to this?
Moot.
Huh?
The third one is moot. It's a planned unit development. That's come out of all the use tables.
Okay, so.
And I'll withdraw the recyclable materials. I'm not going to fight this fight forever that I'm losing here.
So you, okay, so.
So I'm going to stick with the print, the parking lot.
Okay, well, let's, okay, so let's go back to the recyclable materials. You're moving to withdraw that.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I need a vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of withdrawal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This is page twenty.
Okay, now I have a motion here buried in T eighty-nine, and it's, it's an important one. Parking as a lot, parking lot, as a principal use in I M U, I'm recommend, I have a motion to go from conditional by zoning board to conditional by ordinance.
Second.
Okay, move by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Craft. Rice singer votes yes, Craft.
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch.
Yes.
Branch is yes, Clark.
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton? Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. Seven yes, and that one passes on T eight nine for the parking lot principal use. Now, the, the other one, we already.
We got, I'm not going to do, you guys want everything in the world in I ones and I twos? I don't care.
You, you withdraw?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll withdraw the changes for.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It's withdrawn. Now for the committee, T nine oh one, T nine oh one and T nine oh two was withdrawn.
Yeah. So is nine oh three.
T nine oh three is withdrawn.
It's redundant.
Okay, so let's, let's take an official vote. You moved to withdraw. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and T nine oh three is withdrawn. That's page.
What?
Nine oh three, how about?
Nine oh one, nine oh two, nine oh three.
One and two.
Nine oh one, two, three, all three.
They were already with. They're all gone, all gone.
Okay, now, now we are on T nine oh four. That's, it has here, still on table eleven, three oh one on page eighteen. This is Councilwoman.
I don't think so.
Clark, do we vote on all these?
We did a lot of these. We did, all right, here's what we did. We did every, we did everything on this list is a duplicate, all the way down to and through establishment, delete, C B from I M U. We've done, we voted one way or another on every single one of them.
So.
But everything under those, to my, to my memory, we still have not voted on, and they affect I M U, which I have so many of in my bailiwick.
Okay, so it looks like, it looks like you have, for the, for I in the committee, underneath the establishment, you, it looks like you have one, two, three, four, five, six that you want to vote on, correct?
Well, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, that I think we have not, I think they are not redundant unless somehow we did tavern. These are all by an I M U. I'm not going to try to do anything in I ones and I twos anymore, because I, you know, why should I?
Second, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I understand.
So we, I, we can get clarity on this.
And then. Heavy retail sales. Are really, really worried about.
Heavy retail.
I am new areas, the heavy retail.
What's heavy retail?
I have no idea, but. Whatever it is, it's just a lot.
Bury, what's heavy retail?
It's auto oriented, I'll just.
Well, we have a separate auto service and repair. We already voted on.
Councilman, lumber yards, that sort of thing, industrial supply.
Like a Home Depot.
Yeah, that would qualify, right. Equipment, like larger equipment, not the kind of thing you, you know, you randomly stop in and visit.
See, the problem is, they have three hundred square foot retail units, housing units.
Okay, okay, Councilwoman Clark, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Clark, we're ready to begin. So all the members on the committee were on the same page on Miss Councilwoman Clark's amendments. We ended with establishment, now we're, we're starting with.
Correct.
Heavy retail.
Correct, let me.
We did heavy retail. We start with outdoor dining.
Yeah, that, those, yes, and let me say, while we start on this list, that underneath it, T nine oh five is already withdrawn. It is in all, entirely redundant. So it ends, this whole list ends with taverns.
Let's.
Okay.
Let's do nine oh four first.
Let's stay with nine oh four, Councilwoman.
I am, I'm just letting you know there's an end to it. For heavy retail rental and service, motion in I M U to move from permitted to blank.
That is, that is with the personal service?
No, it's for heavy retail, heavy rental and heavy service.
Okay.
In I M U.
Okay, that's heavy retail.
Yes.
Kara Kuntz, on behalf of the Council President's office, as a reminder, on the March fourth, twenty sixteen voting session, you, the committee previously voted on heavy retail rental and service in the I M U district to make it conditional use by ordinance. Just a reminder of what you did at the last session.
Well, then, that's, thank you very much. I mean, I appreciate that. That's moot. I'll withdraw it. Move to withdraw.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and that is withdrawn. So the next one is.
Yeah, let me ask if it's redundant. Have we, have we voted on outdoor dining in I M U?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, sometimes I do lose track in I M U. For outdoor dining, I'm asking in I M U that we change from permitted to conditional by zoning ordinance.
Okay, so you move that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry.
Did you, I say, conditional by ordinance?
No.
By board.
By the board.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Your second? Second by Councilman Henry. Rice singer votes no, Craft.
No.
Craft is no, Branch. Branch is no, Clark.
Yes.
Clark is yes, Henry.
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton? Middleton is no. Mosby?
No.
Mosby is no. Motion fails. We are now on, what's a personal service establishment?
In I M U, now, I haven't, of course, we don't know what they are, and that's one of the mysteries that a zoning board hearing would, would clear up for people.
Personal service establishment is your beauty shop, your barber shop, your, your salon, that sort of thing.
I'd like to move it from permitted use in I M U to conditional by the board.
Okay, do I have a second? Do I have a second? No second. Fails for a second. Now we are on.
Restaurants.
Is, what's that, restaurant?
Yep, permitted to conditional by zoning board for I M U.
Do I have a second? No second. Fails on a second. Next is Councilwoman Clark, is retail goods establishment?
Retail goods establishment with no alcohol sales, but let me know if I'm being redundant in here anyplace. I'd like to move in I M U from permitted to conditional by the zoning board. Oh, so I don't have a second.
That's an I M U. Do I have a second? No second, motion fails.
Okay, everybody, we got a lot of people living in these I M Us. Here we go.
Okay.
For real good establishment, for real rental goods establish, retail, excuse me, goods establishment with alcohol in the building. Move it from, leave it blank in I M U. Forget about one, I'm, I'm not, I'm going to admit the I one, because you guys don't like that, but I got a bunch of people living here. I'd like to delete the conditional by the zoning board and leave it blank.
Mr. Chair?
Do I have a sec, Councilwoman Henry?
Would you be willing to do a friendly amendment and just make it conditional by ordinance in both?
Sure. I, I need to win a vote here.
So what is, let's go back. What is the motion now?
Motion is now to go from conditional by the zoning board to conditional by city council ordinance for a retail goods establishment with alcohol in an I M U.
Okay.
And I one.
No, I took I one out of this. What they do in I one
Okay, I got it.
is up to you guys. You're going to let them do whatever they want.
Second by Councilman Henry. Rice singer votes no, Craft.
No.
Craft is no, Branch. Branch is no, Clark.
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry? You explain your vote.
Yeah, just to be clear, this is, as I see it, consistent with the other changes that the committee has already made in terms of making alcohol sales conditional by ordinance in any type of commercial district which is closely adjacent to residential, and the I M Us would affect.
Combined with the I one, though.
All right, well, she took out the I one. She took the I one out, and so.
Out. I need some help for these people living in the I M U.
So I'm, I'm willing to vote yes, because I think that this is consistent with the actions the committee's already taken.
Okay, Councilwoman Henry, that's a good question. Let's, let's reconsider this. Do I have a motion to reconsider? I mean, we haven't finished the vote, so. We didn't finish the vote. So you reconsider? Do I have a second? Second to reconsider. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now for clarity, what you're doing is you're, basically, when this, you're saying that.
I'm not dealing with industrial again.
Just I M U.
Absolutely. They're living in a building.
Okay.
There's alcohol in a restaurant. Let them, or a retail goods store.
Okay, I get it.
Let them have a chance to say something.
Councilwoman Clark, do we move?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. Rice singer votes yes, Craft.
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch.
Oh, I accepted your amendment, yeah, yes.
Yes. Clark. Councilwoman.
Yes, you can say yes.
It's kind of difficult to hear anything when we're having two or three meetings at that table, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry, my apologies, Mr. Chairman.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
For the record, the change is to go to conditional by ordinance, right? Just for the record, yes.
Yes. So we have seven yes, amendment passes, so now we are on tavern.
Thanks, everybody.
Tavern change.
Oh, tavern. Okay, take out the part about I one and I two. You guys, I'm not talking about them.
I second.
Okay, that's, you're deleting I one and I two.
Oh, that, you mean, that motion? Well, I don't think I need a motion. Before I, I can change it before I put it forward, I think. It's just, I'm taking out anything about industrial.
What is the motion now? Shall we get?
All right. It is, here's a tavern in a building that's I M U. Change from conditional by ordinance in I M U, and that's the end of the sentence. I'm not doing anything anymore with industrial.
Okay, just the, just the I M U.
Just I M U.
Okay, so.
I'm just.
We need a second. Is that you, Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, seconds. Rice singer votes yes, Craft.
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch.
Yes.
Branch is yes, Clark.
Yes.
Clark is yes, Henry.
Yes.
Henry is yes, Middleton.
Yes.
Middleton is yes, yes. Mosby? Mosby is yes. We have seven yes, passes, so that includes.
Thank you all.
Clark's, okay. T, for the committee, T nine oh five was withdrawn. We are now on T nine oh six, which is planning.
I guess too late, you can't tell me this now, I can't.
Is this redundant or what?
Nine oh six is redundant.
Okay, let, let, let's, let's hear from the planning. It's our motion, Councilwoman.
Yeah, nine oh six is redundant, that all, across the board to take that language out about planning developments.
Okay, is that technical? Okay, so we don't have to vote on that. What about T nine oh seven?
Uh, T nine oh seven, uh, this was, I think I would like to request a deferral. This was an attempt to adjust the minimum lot area, and I don't have numbers.
Motion to deferral by Councilman Craft, second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor to deferral, T, to deferral, T nine oh seven, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. So it's, T nine oh seven is deferred. We are now on T nine oh.
That's already deferred. That's deferred, it's redundant.
Okay.
It's already on the list.
All right, so you make it to withdraw?
Well, it's on the deferral this far. I'll withdraw it again.
Okay.
Defer T nine oh eight. Move it off, or withdraw it.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor to withdraw, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T nine oh eight is withdrawn. We are now on planning. It's T seven five five.
And we are in table twelve, Mr. Chairman, now.
That one, it says here, page twenty-two, is that right?
Uh, yes.
Where are we?
Page twenty.
Table, page twenty-two.
Or we go to table twelve?
Table page is page twenty-two.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I have omitted something that is, was submitted on my tables, but not in language, and that is, in an I M U, we have voted, thank you for that, to make, in I M U, principal use parking lots, conditional by ordinance. I would like to do the same for, in I M U, to move to make principal parking lot structures, not the ones associated with where people live, but principal parking lots, conditional by ordinance in I M U.
Where is this at? This is.
It is at, the notebooks which I prepared for you, in the tables for industrial uses, and I failed to put it.
It was also on T eighty-eight. It was also part of T eighty-eight, but.
Right, okay.
I'm sorry to have overlooked it, my.
That's okay.
My legislative director has reminded me.
So Councilwoman Clark, you moved. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Henry.
And I just want to make sure it's all parking lots, city owned, I mean garages, city owned and privately owned. Is that correct, for clarification?
Yes. That's my intent.
Again, so, so the committee understands principal use means it's on its own lot and not part of a other development, so.
Okay, okay.
Where we park.
The only potential downside is sometimes in these industrial areas, it may be separate lots, even though an owner owns, let's say, the building and the lot next to it. If it's two separate legal lots, they would have to go through, even though it was theirs, and they owned both of them, if you pass this amendment, they would have to go through that extra hoop.
May I speak?
Just so you understand.
May I speak about accessory within a certain number of feet? I don't want, what I'm trying to avoid is having a bunch of people live in one place, and then all of a sudden, a commercial garage going up. Solo next. Okay, good.
Okay, so motion, motion by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Henry. Rice singer votes yes, Craft.
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch.
Yes.
Branch is yes, Clark.
Yes.
Clark is yes, Henry.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Henry is yes, Middleton.
Yes.
Middleton is yes, Mosby. Mosby is yes. Motion passes. Now we are on.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I've got to write down what we just did, or I'll never remember it. Okay, now, where are we?
This is mine.
We're going back on something.
Are we on page? Yeah, because I'm going to be on this page.
Okay, now we are on page, if anyone wants attention, now we are on page twenty-one. And. This is what, T? T seven fifty-five, correct? Yes. Planning?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is somewhat technical in nature, and more of a clarification for the users, that this table is the office residential zoning district, which is pretty much what it says. It permits office uses and residential uses. It also has neighborhood. which is pretty much what it says. It permits office uses and residential uses. It also has neighborhood commercial as conditional, similar to the residential. But in, to clarify for the users that, and we suggest adding an asterisk next to the neighborhood commercial, that the office portion would be permitted. It's somewhat redundant, but it is to add clarification.
Okay, do I have a motion to move?
Motion to move.
Moved by Councilwoman Middleton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. Right singer votes yes. Craft is absent. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have six yess with one absent. T-55 passes. We are now on page. We're now on page 22. Page 22. This is, uh.
Yeah.
T-848. And on the tables, we're on page 22, Table 12, 301. And this is regards to Anna Baker on behalf of BG&E. Do I have a motion?
Um, I make a motion to move.
Moved by Councilwoman Middleton. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. Right singer votes yes. Craft is absent. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. So we have five yess with one absent and T-848 passes. We are now on T-909. Again, we're on page 22 in the tables. This is Table 12, 301. Councilwoman Henry? This is yours. You make it.
It's just the beginning, I think.
Uh, I'd like to move to make fraternity and sorority houses, instead of conditional by board, make them conditional by ordinance.
Okay, moved by Councilman Henry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton.
But I took them out.
Right singer votes.
Yeah, but these are, this is OR.
Craft is absent. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Uh, Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. Councilwoman Craft?
Yes.
Councilwoman Craft votes yes. We have seven yess and T-909 passes.
Yeah, if I could, while we're here on this section, I wanted to ask, would it be, is there, is there something keeping us from making residential care facilities 17 or larger? And rooming houses, both of which are in the tables as conditional by board, is there anything keeping us from making them conditional by ordinance?
No.
And the reason I raise this issue is, I have a couple cases of properties that are office residential in my district because they were previously, you know, part, like, a home business, like a doctor's office or such. So they tend to be rather large houses, and we've already had one instance of someone trying to take one and turn it into something that the community was uncomfortable with. So I'd just as soon lock that down right now if that's possible.
We're in the lotty part. Can you answer, Councilman Henry?
Yeah, I just want to have a clarification. Which residential care facility, larger than 17 or not?
17 or larger.
17 or larger is probably a little bit easier to do a conditional by ordinance or board, but I think it's by board, it's already conditional by board. I think you could probably do conditional by ordinance for 17 or larger if you wanted to.
And rooming house?
What do you mean, rooming house?
Okay, let's, let's, let's do, we'll do it one at a time. I move that residential care facility 17 or larger be conditional by ordinance.
Second.
Okay, moved by, hold on, hold on for one second. Moved by Councilman Henry, second by Councilwoman Clark, due by ordinance. Right singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Okay, Branch has stepped out. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. So we have six yess with one absent. Motion passes. Councilman Henry?
And I would move that rooming houses would also be conditional by ordinance.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm sorry. Are you meaning residential care facility smaller than 17?
17 or larger. 17 or larger.
I'm sorry. I thought you just did 17 or larger conditional by ordinance in OR.
We did that.
And now, moving on to the next one, which would be rooming houses.
The rooming house. Right now, it's conditional by board.
Move it to conditional by ordinance.
He wants to go from CP to CO.
I see. All right. On page 20.
Page 22 of the table.
Right, so rooming house in an OR district, I mean, this is going to be more problematic legally because if, if they're basically four people living in it, say, an AIDS facility or something, there's some, you know, ability for them to locate anywhere you would put any other size.
Why would that be considered a rooming house? Why wouldn't that be a residential care facility? If the occupant?
I see what you're, oh, you, I'm sorry. You aren't doing residential care facility. You're doing rooming house that isn't a residential care facility.
Correct.
That's fine.
That's fine. Okay, so your motion is to move it to CO?
It's not on the paper.
Okay, moved by Councilman Henry. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. Right singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. The motion passes. Seven. Um, for the committee now, we are, that was T-09. Now, T-389 and T-390 was withdrawn. We are now on T-754, which is Planning. That's page 24. Councilwoman.
Yeah, we're picking, I'm sorry. We're picking them up on page 20, T-38.
No, listen, we are, we are on T, let me speak. We are on T-754, page 24 in the table book, and this is Planning. Right?
That's fine.
Yes. You ready for T-754?
I'm ready for it, yeah. Go ahead.
Uh, this is really a technical cleanup. This is the, the high-intensity transit-oriented development zones. These are near, say, the Penn Station or the Mark, and it is to make, to delete the rear yard requirement in TOD 3 and 4. It should be none. Right now, it says 15 feet, none. And it's really actually a typo, but it's to clarify that it should be none.
So what do you, so, so go back, so.
On table, table on page 26, I would argue it's technical, but if the committee wants to look at it, that should read none. It says both 15 and none.
Okay, so, so this is, you're going to table 26 on this, or T-7?
Page 26 is Table 12, 403, Transit-Oriented Development Bulk and Yard Standards.
Okay. And so are you saying this is technical in nature, or are you, or are you making a motion, are you making a motion on that?
I, I'll defer to the committee. I think it's technical in nature, but either way, we move to make it none. Technical?
Huh? It's technical? Yeah. Okay, it's technical, so we don't have to move on that. What about T, now we're on T-765, page 26, Table 12, 402.
And that is, again, there's really kind of a word missing there. It says, under TOD 2, 60 feet or five stories. And it should, then it says 100 feet, and that needs to say by conditional use.
So, okay, so it was an error. So it should be conditional by ordinance?
Uh, no, those are conditional use to the board.
Okay, I see. Okay. All right, do I have a motion? Do we understand, any questions on this?
It's TOD, right?
TOD 2, yes.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Councilman Mosby?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. Right singer votes yes. Craft? Craft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have seven yess. Uh, T-74 passes. Now we are on.
8:49, it's the BG&E.
That was T-765. Now we are on T-849. This is page 24 on the tables. Page 24 on the tables.
Yes, move them.
Uh, Councilwoman Clark, move?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilwoman Middleton. Right singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. Seven yess, T-849 passes. Now we are on T-910. This is page 24, Table 12, 402. Councilman Craft?
This was to, um, first one is for banquet halls in TOD 2 and TOD 4, to change them from permitted uses to conditional by ordinance.
Okay, moved by Councilman Craft, second by Councilwoman Clark. Right singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch, yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark, yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry, yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby, yes. Seven yess. That's moved, that passes. Councilwoman, I mean, Councilman Craft, that takes care of the banquet hall. What's the next one? Entertainment Live?
For live entertainment, move from permitted to conditional use to the board.
Second.
Second, moved by Councilman Craft, second by Councilwoman Clark.
Question.
Yes, Councilman, right singer, Craft?
Question.
I had a question.
Is there a question? Yeah. Councilman Henry?
Yeah, so I have language that we, we deferred from a different zone previously where we were going, the language is going to separate Entertainment Live into three different categories based on the size of the facility. And this is purely a question because I don't have any TOD in my district, and so it wasn't a district that I'd been thinking about when we were having this conversation before. Do you care about subdividing it into?
No.
Size in this? Okay, that's all, that was my only question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sure, we're good.
Right.
Craft, how do you vote?
Yes.
Craft votes yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Let it rip. Yes.
Yes, okay. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Yes. Seven passes. Uh, what's the next one? Lodge or social club, right?
Right, move from permitted to conditional ordinance.
Any reason?
Moved by Councilman.
Just like banquet halls.
Do I have a second?
Just turn into.
Second by middle, by Mosby? Councilman Mosby. Right singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Fraternities.
Clark?
At a stain, I got fraternities and sororities in this definition.
Okay, Clark abstains. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have six yess with one abstained. Motion passes. That takes care of Craft with 910, correct? So that is page, that was page. 22. We are now on page 23, right?
They're not in TOD.
We're now on page 23.
No, I mean, oh.
We're now on page 23 of 27. We're now on T-762, which is, uh, we don't have a page here.
It is actually page 26. That should be, read as Table 12, 403, for that amendment, as opposed to 12, 402, in the table number. And this is to, the planning commission voted to increase the density in the transit-oriented development for residential uses to be more similar to the commercial areas like a C-2, and that is 300 units per acre, 300 square feet, I'm sorry, 300, not units per acre, 300 square feet per dwelling unit, similar to your C-2s, C-1s and C-2s, for the TOD zones.
Motion. You have a question?
The higher-density TOD zones, TOD 2 and 4 already are written as no limit. The TOD 1 and 2 are the TODs that are a little bit closer to, they're a little bit lower scale, yes.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Councilman Craft. Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Right singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
No.
Clark is no. Henry?
Yes.
Henry, Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Yes. Mosby is yes. We have six yess with one no. T-1203. Wait a minute, what is that? That's, T-771 passes.
No, that was 762. 771.
762, I'm sorry.
Yeah. The next one is back to Table 12, 402, page 24 of the tables. And this is to change the office use in TOD 1 and 3 from conditional to permitted, consistent with the general nature.
Okay, all right. That's T-771, correct, for the record?
Yes.
Okay, Craft?
Move.
Move, second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Right singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby? Mosby?
Yes.
Yes. We have seven yess. T-71, T-771 passes.
Here we are.
Now we're on the long one here. It's T-106. This is page 27 in our book, 12, Table 12, 502. This is Councilwoman Clark.
Um, yes. It is actually. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this.
There's like eight, eight sub amendments to this. You got.
I'm sorry, what?
You have eight amendments to this, separate.
Basically, if you will turn to the notebook that we prepared for all members and go to page, um, oh, you got it. What did I, sorry, 39? 39 in my notebook. In other words, the notebook number at the top that is at the top of your notebooks. It says 39 tables slash MPC. That's what T-106 is. Now, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna.
Let's, let's, Councilwoman, let's, I want to make sure all the committee members have, have this in front of them before we move on.
Okay, notebook.
It's on the communication package that Councilwoman Clark gave us.
This is mine, I think. This is mine. Okay, so this is all one. Okay, I'm with you. Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Actually, this is, this is council, more than. This is Councilwoman Sharon Middleton's and mine work here, working with Roland Park Civic League and others. So, I would like to move T one oh six. Here's what it does. It breaks the E, it breaks E's educational campus. Okay, I'm just trying to explain so people know. Basically, we're doing, we're doing yard and bulk rates for EC one and separate ones for EC two. They're on the page, I'm moving it on our behalf.
And I second.
Clark, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Right Singer votes, yes, Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch? Branch is yes, Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes, Henry?
No.
Henry is no?
Oh.
Henry is no. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes, Mosby? Mosby is yes, we have six yes with one no. That takes care of the first one, the second one, Councilwoman Clark? That's a bulk rate, maximum building height?
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
The bulk regulation.
Oh, the second part, the bulk, this is EC two.
We voted for the whole thing, right?
I thought you were doing the whole thing.
I was, I did.
Okay, so, that, okay, that is, that is my error.
Okay.
That's my error.
Thank you, it's important.
So...
Important that we know.
Okay, no.
That was all done at the same time.
Okay.
Councilman Henry had to, well, he's voting no.
Okay, we're good. So now we are on T one sixteen. Again, this is page twenty-seven. Table twelve five oh two. Is anyone gonna sponsor this or take ownership of this? Is there a motion? No motion, okay. T nine one one was withdrawn?
Yes.
And now we're on page, that was page twenty-three, we're now on page twenty-four. T nine twelve, page twenty-seven, twelve, Table twelve five oh two. This is planning. T nine twelve?
I think this may have just been overvoted by Councilwoman Clark's.
Correct.
Okay, so...
See you later, alligator.
Just so the committee knows, this was a recommendation, the Planning Commission voted based on hearing from the educational institutions that this would allow them to take it into the context. So, it was sixty-five feet or the greater of the existing buildings in the area, because there are institutions that have taller buildings around them.
They still have...
Do you want me to withdraw?
No. Oh, yes, that, yes.
Motion was moved by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Henry. All those who favor the withdrawal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, T nine twelve is withdrawn. T nine thirteen is planning.
Yes, I think this, this is probably a cross between a text and a table amendment. I guess it needs to be in both. This is to make clear that the height is measured on the perimeter of the campus, as opposed to the interior, for the building heights.
We've just made that distinction in the amendments to EC two.
So you move, do we say?
Do you agree, I don't want to... I mean, we said it's sixty-five, which is what you want. From the, oh, I'm sorry, from the, oh, I don't know, I don't have any opinion about that, I have no idea.
The planning recommendation is there be an asterisk on the table where it references height that says it's measured from the perimeter of the campus. So if the campus, you know, is hilly, it's the exterior that matters.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Um, okay, just, I want to get a little, little bit of clarification, just so that I'm visualizing this properly. If the campus is hilly and there, the campus is building on a hill in the middle of the campus, we're gonna, we're not gonna say sixty-five... Are we, so is it sixty-five feet from ground level where the hill is? Or it's sixty-five feet from whatever the closest point is?
The curb of the perimeter.
So, so let me...
Typically, in other words...
Wait a minute, let me, okay, so if you're at, if you're at Towson and you're on York Road, I'm just using that even though it's gonna count, you're on York Road and that's your level, and then up on the hill, which is like twenty feet or thirty feet higher at the top of the hill there, you could only build a thirty-five-foot tall building.
You'd build a shorter building because of the hill, right?
Down, yeah, on the street level, you could build sixty-five feet, but up at the top of the hill, you could only build thirty.
Right, this came to the commission from the opposite perspective. It actually came to the commission from Johns Hopkins, which on Charles Street is more of a high point, and many of, much of the campus goes downward. So they requested it to be measured from the street so they could do taller buildings in the interior of the campus. So it's sort of the reverse impact of the...
Councilwoman Mosby, you have, are you okay?
If everyone understands, I'm okay.
So, is there, do I have a motion? Does you have a motion?
Let's move on.
There's no motion, T nineteen fails because of a motion. We are now on T seven six nine, planning.
I think that's a duplicate and has been overruled by Councilwoman Clark's amendment.
Okay, so Councilwoman Craft moves to withdraw, do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Craft, I mean Clark. All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it. We're now on, this is planning, T seven six eight.
This is the...
Twelve six oh two.
Yes, this is for the hospital zones and...
Before you go, I gotta, where's, we're page twelve six... It's six oh two.
Right, it's page twenty-seven of the tables.
That's it, okay, on the bottom, okay, hospital, campus, twelve, okay. Okay, go ahead, Laurie.
This is clarifying language in the building height on hospitals, notwithstanding anything here into the contrary, the greater of, and this is where it says a hundred and fifty, the greater of a hundred and fifty or the height of the highest existing building in the immediate hospital campus district as of effective date of this code. So again, if a hospital has a building next to it that's already a hundred and sixty feet, they would be a hundred and sixty feet instead of a hundred and fifty. There are a few, generally a hundred and fifty is pretty comfortable for hospitals, what we're seeing in modern institutions, you know, they have very high floor-to floors because of the ventilation and equipment. But there were a few exceptions, and therefore the commission voted that this language, just to give that little bit of wiggle room, it would really, realistically be, pretty much Johns Hopkins would be the main downtown.
Yeah, I move that.
Council, Councilwoman Craft moves, do I have a second? Do I have a second? Councilwoman Right Singer, seconds. Right Singer votes, yes, Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes, Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes, Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes, Middleton? Middleton is yes, Mosby? Mosby, yes, seven yes on T seven six eight. T four hundred was withdrawn.
Correct.
We are now on page twenty-five. On page twenty-five, T four oh six and T four oh seven was withdrawn.
Correct, these are all, they've already been adopted.
Okay, with T, those two were withdrawn. I see here, it's in blue, but T, T nine twenty-two.
Oh, this is, yeah, Public Works will speak to this, sorry, the color got dark there, but...
Yes, this amendment was submitted by the Department of Public Works to clarify that stormwater management facilities should be permitted use in a yard. Yards, because the definition of yard basically says it should not have any obstruction between the grass and anything above it. So this table, we're looking now at table fifteen dash six oh one, permitted enrochements.
It's page thirty-nine of the tables.
Page thirty-nine of the tables? Is that what you said, Laurie?
Yes.
I'll move that.
You move it?
Yeah.
Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Craft? Wait a minute, just hold on for one second.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know what it means, they can encroach on what? They can encroach on...
And put their stormwater facility in their front yard, is what it means.
Like a rain garden.
Oh, like a, like a storm thing, not the building.
No, this is not about buildings.
But like a, a rain garden or dig a trench or whatever you do, in all these places.
Right, in all your yards.
Right, so other examples in this table of permitted enrochements include things like flagpoles, lawn furniture. So the table fifteen dash six oh one is just a list of everything that you can put in a yard. So we just want to clarify, yes, it's a table referring to yards, side yards, rear yards, okay.
We're good. T nine two two, Craft moves, correct? Craft moves, second by Councilwoman Middleton. Right Singer votes, yes, Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch? Branch is yes, Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes, Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes, Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, yes, Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby, yes. T nine twenty-two passes.
It's laundry drying equipment is a permitted encroachment. In my book, in this book, it's Table fifteen six oh one.
I think I just didn't put it in.
Okay, so we're now, for the committee, we're still on page twenty-five. T five forty, this is Baltimore Parking Association. Does, we're on Table sixteen four oh two. Does anyone sponsor this? Do I have a motion, no motion? No motion, T five forty does not move, because of no motion. Right now, we're on T eight twenty-five, planning. This is, what page, does it have a page here, Laurie?
Oops.
Sixteen four oh three.
I'm sorry.
Table sixteen four oh three.
And, there may be, must be an error, I'll have to ask to defer, because I don't, I'm not seeing where this is.
So T eight twenty-five is deferred, moved by Councilwoman Craft, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Henry. All those who favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it.
I don't know, I didn't put it on there. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I would like to re-bring T one sixty-nine back to life. I have deferred it, and that was... I thought it was a duplicate, but it's not, and I'd like to have it brought back out of limbo and voted on, or at least make a motion on it, please. It's about parking spaces.
Bless you.
God bless you.
Okay, T one sixty-nine.
It is, basically, it is for banquet halls, and it changes the capacity, if, the capacity to two, for every ten, God bless you, persons of rated capacity to two per ten, by fire-rated capacity. I...
Which are off-street parking?
Yes, that would be true.
You're saying one per five.
In other words, how much off-street do you have to provide? And my apologies, it is not one, I'm amending from one parking space per ten persons of fire capacity to two parking spaces off-street for a banquet hall's parking.
Councilwoman Henry, you have a question?
Yeah, I would ask if you would be willing to go a little bit further in terms of the calculation and make it one per four persons?
Like a church?
Like a church.
Sure, I'd be glad to.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll explain the reasoning in terms of it, my, my understanding is that this is supposed to be, in theory, how many people are coming to the establishment in each car, and that's the whole point, is that if, if you're requiring off-street parking, it's because you're expecting that the guests are coming by car. And the reality is that, you know, two, to say that we need one spot, or two spots for every ten people implies that we're expecting five people to come in each car. And I have, I am unaware of the banquet hall, which functions in which the guests coming to the event all come in the, in the, all come five to a car. So, I'm just trying to be a little bit more practical and hold them to the same standards that we hold places for worship.
It's noted, Councilwoman Mosby?
Nothing's in it. Nothing's in it. Just for the record, I totally understand what you're saying, Councilman Henry, but we're also being counterproductive as it relates to ensuring that we drive to a 21st century transportation model associated with around development. And to think that we have to create one car for every four persons in an event hall of three or four hundred or five hundred just is not practical as it relates to any development.
In addition, the committee had already voted that this use be conditional by ordinance. So you, in that ordinance process, you will have the opportunity to review each of these on a case-by-case basis.
I'm going to, thank you very much, I have a motion on the floor that I'd like to go back to, which is substitute two spaces per ten persons of rated capacity.
Okay, it's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Henry. Right Singer votes, no, Craft?
No.
Craft is no, Branch? Branch is no, Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes, Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes, Middleton? Middleton is no, Mosby? Mosby's no. T one sixty-nine fails. We are now going to go on recess and come back at two o'clock. When we come back, we will be on T one seventy.